Okay, I'll give you a minute to look over your meeting. Probably you know already what they are. And I'll entertain a motion. I hear a motion that we approve the minutes without being read. So we second.
Second.
All in favor by signifying aye. Aye. The ayes have it. Okay, item number one on the agenda, Ms. Susan, Ms. Ellen. Comments on animal shelter in Pierce County.
Yes, thank you very much. I'm Susan. I wanted to bring up a couple of things tonight that I hope you're aware of. There's a House Bill 685 from Georgia was passed effective July 1st, 2012. It was only passed in March of this year. And it makes the county responsible to do certain things. Once a dog is determined to be dangerous, if he's punctured somebody's skin or some animal or livestock, he must have a microchip. He must provide, the owner must provide proof of at least $50,000. And he must have a certificate of registration with the county. And it happens a second time, the dog is to be euthanized. It's a law that the county, they mentioned counties, but counties adhere to these laws. And I actually, in case you haven't seen it, brought a couple copies. I brought a copy for the person now on the Doc Committee under the Chairman. And I also brought a copy for the attorney. He's not here. So you can pass it on. But that's the whole of the law, just to make you aware of that. It's more important than ever that we have a doc shelter so that these things can be accomplished. In addition to that, I understand through research at the county and through newspapers that the SPOS fund from 2003 had $67,000 left and it was swept to pay bills. Okay, we understand that except that that $67,000 and hundreds, odd number of hundred, was actually Blackshear's money. And the commissioners told them that they would give them, Blackshear backed their money, which they had designated for a shelter, not the county. As far as I could go, which I couldn't go more than a year, I've never seen any indication that the county itself was doing anything. Now, I've heard from several people in the county, walking around, talking to people, that the property behind the UPS building was a designated place for a possible county shelter. Without the $67,000, $67,000, they can't build it. But on top of that, the 60, that property behind the shelter is swamp land. It takes one quick trip to the county to find that out. It cannot be built on. It would take a half a million dollars to make that property suitable, which is totally out of sight. Secondly, I checked the county records for other properties owned by the county and found only one that was a possibility. Everything else either has a courthouse on it or something huge. And that's 209 acres out where the dump is at this time. I found out from further investigation that that dump, that that 209 acres of property is not potable. So we've got too much water in one place, not enough water here. So to start the whole thing, you have no property to put it on. The county has never actually designated money for the shelter. People talk about it. I understand the property, the SPOS, the SPOS fund this time, and I don't know what it is because it's not published yet, is more designated for the particular things. Hopefully, there is a shelter in there with these new laws, two of them that I brought to your attention. We can enforce these. Secondly, on this committee, I know Paul Christian is on the committee and Jack Barrett, Larsen, and George Dennison. I was wondering why Offerman isn't represented. I know they're small, but they are a city and a county. I was just wondering about that. I do want to say we've still got the donation jars out. The $14,000 to check that property is moot because the property is obviously not buildable without major funds. So if anybody can answer, what is the plan? And we just, is this an election thing, you know, where everybody talks about it and then we just forget about it again? But we do have laws that should be enforced in this county, as in all of Georgia. We had a woman, and I've seen it in the paper, the last time I did a letter to the editor, I mentioned this couple that had lost their cat. And we, after three months, actually found the cat and returned it. She sent me an email. I checked on her a month after she was home for a while. And she wrote me back that the cat was doing great. But she said to, and I'll quote her, and this is Mary Jane Ritter. "We talked to a lot of Patterson citizens who were generally concerned and helpful in our search for Bella. Some even said they put food out for strays in your area. Hopefully, with all these caring people, Pierce County will see the need and provide a shelter for all these needy strays." It's not just needy strays. It's wild, dangerous animals. They've killed animals, they've killed livestock. I've heard so many occurrences, I don't even want to list them. Does it take killing a child to get a shelter? That's all I have to say. Do we have any idea when the animal thing will be, the meeting? And will the public be invited?
I just, the Chairman and I just talked about this the other day. And I've touched bases with the Mayor. And there will be a meeting coming up shortly, hopefully the next week or so, so we can put a plan together as to how to invite everybody in that's concerned and wants to help with this project. And that's what we're working on right now.
Well, certainly, I will help spread the word. I know every month you have my name and number, and Ellen's. And we'll be more than happy to spread the word if that's necessary. Thank you.
Thank you.
I don't have very much to say, but I have been involved, Mr. Ray Cross Animal Shelter, and give collective blankets from Pierce County, from veins, when they went all over the place, when they come, they have something. And I think our animals over here need to be treated the same way. So maybe we can get something going. Okay? Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, item number two is Georgia Forest Recommission, Uncle Donnie James.
First of all, thank y'all for allowing me an opportunity to give us a report. And thank the county for all they do for us. Fire Department helped us out a lot. And it's just, it's just good cooperation. We appreciate it. All of you should have this. I hope you've got it. I emailed a copy of the operation report.
Got it.
Okay. So I just want to kind of get the highlights. It won't take me but a minute. But this is an operation report for Pierce County, George, Pierce County Unit, George Forest Commission, for, ended June the 30th of 2012. Part we were responsible for is 112,000 acres, that's forested, 219,000 total acres in Pierce County. And then what the county commission, the taxpayers, what they donate towards, or donate or pay towards the state forest operations, is $11,210.60. Act personnel, as of that time, their Chief Ranger was, at that time, was vacant. And there'd be myself, Tony Thomas, David Westbury, we had a TDM Ranger over there. We're getting him trained up. Permits for the year, total permits, automated, everything, the permits that we give from the unit over there was 11,499 permits for the year. And the total acres burned, for those permits, was 17,362 acres. We offer a burning assistance if you need to burn, if you burn it. Two landowners for 70 acres. That's, figure's a little low. Last year wasn't a very good burning year. It was, it was too hot and too dry. We didn't get, we didn't get a lot accomplished as far as burning last year. We did plant a lot of fire breaks for a total landowner for 50, about 27 with fire plow for 91 miles, and 23 with a Harris for 145 miles. And that's a total of 236 miles. That's a pretty good little trek. That's about like clouds of Atlanta. That'd be a, that'd be a slow mode of transportation that you'd get. Last year, thankfully, our wildfires were down from the year before. We only had 48 last year, 155, 457 acres. The fire year average is, what's that, 51 fires for 192 acres. With a lot of cooperation and good Lord looking after us, we held the fires down. If you look at response time during normal operating hours, that's an average of 19.2 minutes, the time a call comes in to the time we start plowing on the fire. If you figure, we're in Patterson and a lot of our fires are back over this way, that's pretty good response time. And then after hours on weekends and holidays, it's 27 minutes. So that's still, that's still a pretty good time. You have to leave the house and get over and get a tractor and get back and start plowing on it. So we sold 44,980 seedlings last year. Public education outreach programs, we had nine school-related programs, that's fire prevention program we did in elementary schools, FFA and 48, reaching 2,079 people. We distributed 650 pieces of educational literature or promotional items, pencil and rulers, that type of stuff to elementary school. We did four, fire wise, fire prevention, we did four programs, contacts 32 hours, reaching 846 people. We've got three tractor plow response units. We just got a new case, which is our first tractor with environmental cap. We do have one tractor with air conditioning. So we're slowly coming into the 21st century. And it makes, it's nice. It's nice. And we've also got a quick response pickup type, so we can keep it in. Forest management, we did 42 cases. That was including forest health stewardship programs, conservation reserve programs, water quality. And RFD program had 170 total calls. That included wrecks, fires, miscellaneous calls for service, and 58 fire calls. That's all I got. Questions?
No other questions. Thank y'all. Thank you, Donnie, for the job y'all do. You say it takes you 27 minutes from your house to the fire station back to Pierce County?
That's average.
Average, okay.
That's after hours. That's a, that's a pretty good average.
Okay, the consent agenda. Item number three, four, five, six. I hear a motion that we accept those.
No motion, Mr. Chairman, except.
I say aye. All in favor by signifying aye. Aye. And the ayes have it. Item number seven is Derek Mallard, Director of Hookah Fanuki EMS.
This is a little overview of our first week working with Pierce County on the EMS side, sorting through the billing and trying to get things in compliance like we need to be for the EMS service. I'm just going to go over this. You can read it as you want. We're just going to make an overview of it and then we'll open up for questions. To begin with, we logged 97 man-hours last week with Pierce County, our company did. And we had 44 billable hours. So that shows you at times we had two to three people here because we were not here eight hours a day. We got a lot accomplished last week. We were able to, to make it through a lot of records, a lot of billing statements, get a number of runs and claims up to date that was behind. So, you know, item one, we started with a process of refiling and getting things called up. We found 288 claims that had not been submitted for payment, just in the very first review, the first, the very first day. We had those QA'd and filed with, with the various companies by Wednesday. Of the 288 claims, we see that on a very conservative effort, the county should be getting somewhere in the neighborhood of about 68,500 in the next 20 to 25 days on those claims. We really expect more than that because that's based on just a base fee. That's not the mileage that's included. So to run those figures, I would, I would have to go deeper into it. You know, logically, we're looking at somewhere in the neighborhood between the 68 filed and about 110,000, just the first two days that we found that had not been filed from May, June, July, and August. So we are catching up with that. On the, the 1st of September, we were able to switch over from the old ART system, the old system from delays, or the documentation system that delayed billing from two to four weeks. With this new system, we were able to, we're able to do it within 24 to 48 hours. And that was changed over at no cost to the county. And I was able to renegotiate contract with the billing vendor up in La Grange from 6.5% down to, down to 5.5%, which is going to show a savings to the county of about $7,000 a year. Hopefully, it's going to end up being a little bit more than that. I'm trying my best to get them to go down to 5%, but they, they have not, you know, they say they want to go a couple of months on the new system and see if we get collections up high enough so that they can give us another half a percent drop, which could be another significant savings. We're, we're currently going back and making sure that, that we get any old claims in the billing process again, so we will not get hit with untimely filing issues. We discussed in another meeting the worry of, of being flagged as all ALS service and billing practices. We have discussed that with the, with the vendor. And they had actually flagged the account and had been self-audiing or self-policing, should we say, to make sure we would not get flagged for it. So that was something that we did implement also. And we're going back and downgrading and making sure that we have what we, what we have to have to go back and collect some of this, two to three, $400,000 that's out there. I figured that I just, but right before we walked in, showed like 292,000 and some odd change in 18 months that hopefully we're going to be able to get a big chunk of. I completed that probably right around 4:45 or so. So that's why I didn't make it into this report. And item C here, under number one, the first day, first couple of days we were in there, we found approximately $6,200 in checks that was stuck in the vault, in various files, in folders. And whenever I say stuck in the vault, it was literally stuck in there in different places. I mean, there was, there was, they were not in a file. We found some up on the top shelf. We found some in a box. We found them in various places. So those have been scanned, they've been posted properly, and the checks were, you know, brought over promptly to go into the general fund. On Wednesday, this is on item E, on Wednesday, we found a printout that showed $818,000 that goes back to 2005, that we're in the process of going over and trying to see. I spent part of the afternoon on the phone with the Credit Bureau Agency that's, that's been working in Pierce County, trying to get to the bottom of why. I had one condensed report that showed part of the problem, but we're still, we still have a lot of work to go on that. We're going to see what of that 818,000 we can get filed. We really don't know at this point, you know, what it'll be. We should know something in the next two to three days of where we're going to stand on that. Hopefully, the ones that are 12 to 36 months old, we can get a good portion of. But again, that's going to be to sort through 2,050 individual claims. So that's, that's really a, that's, that's going to be a job for us to go through. Item number two, we, we reviewed the budget and the staff. We sat down with, with James and went through and, and looked to see what people work good together at the EMS service and who, on emergency calls, you have to have a good, good work partner. You have to have people that can, you know, that can work together whenever you're in an emergency situation. To use an example, yesterday, we had a bad burn here in Ware County, I mean, in Pierce County. And the two people that were there implemented the proper protocols, some of the new protocols we put in place. And they were able to get to the hospital. This lady took care of, and she was flown out within about an hour and 30 minutes from the time the call came in. She had, she had major burns to the right side of her body. So hopefully, she's going to have a good outcome. So, you know, meeting those needs, the patient care is first and foremost for the citizen. But collecting the money and supporting the ambulance service so the taxpayers don't have to put the entire bill is, you know, is the big goal. But we changed shifts around. We got people that's working together. The staff meetings went really well. People, people are getting, getting on board and they want to learn the new system. They want to work and they want to do what they're supposed to. And I'm really excited about seeing the changes that we're making. We've done some things to the, to Station, Station One over here. Mr. Paul's come over to check things out. We're moving supplies out of the heat so that they will not get ruined and move it into a controlled area. So we'll have better inventory control over that. We've reviewed the budget. That'll come up later on this year. We hope to cut the budget by at least 20% of where it was last year by increasing collections and cutting the budget from where we were at for the 2012. You know, hopefully, we're going to be real close to the EMS supporting itself. Payroll wise, we're hiring part-time people to fill some spots we have right now. It's projected that by the end of the year, that we're going to save somewhere in the neighborhood of about $12,000, just in overtime expenses that has been occurring. And that could be a little bit more, but, you know, we would rather go with a lower figure on that. We, item three, we hit the, the new EMS policies to meet our compliance and, and protocols. Dr. Waters will have to approve the new protocols. We have them in rough draft to make sure we have everything in there properly. And we will be submitting them to him for the new protocols, which are based on the State of Georgia protocols for EMS. Also, the EMS policy manual, that's being reviewed. That will be presented to the commission to go through and adopt that. And it just simply gives you, as a EMS worker on the truck, the proper ways of how to handle various situations, from being attacked to an ambulance being in a wreck, to day-to-day operations. You know, it's cut and dry. There's no gray areas. It's straightforward. And you understand, we have a social media policy. So many people are on Facebook and things like that nowadays. There's a lot, there's a lawsuit that's going on or just completed in New York where some paramedics posted some pictures from a, from a run. And they just lost a, for, the county lost a 4-point, some odd million dollar lawsuit because of HIPAA violations. So we're implementing the new social media policy to make sure we cover ourselves on that. So again, that will be presented to you. And as I summed up there, we're, we're going to try to reduce the budget. And we're projecting that collections will be somewhere around 695,000 for the year 2013. And I really hope we can get it higher than that, just simply by filing things timely and properly. But I, again, I would rather go conservative and meet our goals and exceed those goals than, you know, fall well short of them. So do y'all have any quotes? One other thing, the, as you see on, on further back, third or fourth page, this is a new report that we're going to give to y'all each month. It's from the new EPCR system. One thing I'm really proud of, that we've worked on in one week, comparing before and after in one week, from the time a call comes in to 911 to an ambulance arrives on scene is averaging seven minutes. That's from the time that the, that the person is on with 911 to an ambulance is at their door. That is remarkable. The average for the state's more than 14. So here in Pierce County, we're at seven. And, you know, that's, that's just the guys, they really want to do what they need to do. The next thing is the scene time. That's showing that that's 24 minutes after the calls come in. So from the time the call comes in to the time they're loaded and on the way to the hospital's 24 minutes. Again, that's remarkable. The average for the State of Georgia is, just on scene averages much over 20 minutes. We're, we're down to about a 20-minute turnaround time at the hospital. We used to average about an hour and 45 minutes to two hours. We're down to 20 minutes. Our goal's to get down to lower than 15 minutes so that those trucks will be back into the county and ready to respond again. So those reports are, are there for you to look at. It breaks it down with how many IVs were started in one week. And this will be a monthly report, again, but how many IVs, how many EKGs, how many pulse oxes, the various things that the personnel did while they were on the calls. And then the very last thing you'll see is an urgent memo from the billing service. And it discusses the prepaid reviews. It discusses the, the importance of signed print reports, of proper documentation, and the signed physician certification statement, should they be needed in, on certain types of runs. It, it discusses all the rules and regulations that are now out there. And we have implemented everything on this memo to make sure that we do meet, meet this compliance. So I'll open it up for any questions.
Derek, could you explain the ALS billing? What was going on with that?
What, what was going on was, all, all runs were being billed advanced life support. The basis behind that is, is every Pierce County is known as an advanced life support ambulance. It's the top of the line in EMS. They carry specialized equipment, carry drugs. And it is an advanced life support ambulance, should it be needed. But just because there's a paramedic on the truck and the equipment doesn't make every run that you, that you make a billable advanced life support call. To use for an example, a wreck that was, went to a day or two ago. It was a minor accident. The person was complaining of some shoulder pain. They were put on a spineboard, put a C collar on, monitored, transported. That would not be considered advanced life support because there was no advanced life support procedures done. So that was billable for BLS. There's only 40, I think it's $42.83 difference in the difference in collections for a advanced life support versus a basic life support. If you bill that advanced life support, the insurance company is going to reject it because you have to turn in a full report to every, on every call, to every insurance company, whether it's Medicare, Medicaid, or whatever it is. So billing ALS, that flags you on everything in insurance, Medicare, Medicaid, auditor's eyes as not billing properly. So that's one thing we have, have done, is implemented and started training the folks on how to properly identify that, as well as the way that we do our quality assurance and make sure and review every individual run, unless it's a weekend, and we still try, try to do it on weekends within 24 hours after the run. And the reason we try to make sure we QA within 24 hours- And the reason we try to make sure we QA within 24 hours is if that person's still on duty and they missed a signature, or they missed something that they were supposed to have, they're still on duty. That doesn't hold us up for two or three days in getting that billed. We can get them while they're on duty and get that report corrected and billing properly.
Is this some of the reasons why the $818,000 was not, uh, dealt with?
From the appearance, yes, sir. From what I see right now, from, from the records I could go through last week and, and today, uh, that appears to be a large portion of it.
And we can only go back 36 months?
Some things we can only go back 18 months. Uh, some things, we may be able to go back 36. It really depends on the insurance company and how it was filed, how it was rejected, and how it was followed up on. You know, to use another example of one thing of us getting things timely filed, uh, we were right on the edge, and we already have a new, uh, a, a paper that was sent off today, a company sent, and, you know, it's $250. Well, you think $250, but when you add $250 up 2,050 times, that's a lot of, a lot of money. You know, last week, we had a, a, a claim refiled that was from May of 2010. Well, it showed in the system that it had never been paid, the check had never been issued, nothing had ever been done, and they sent us a letter and said, "We sent you a check. We sent Pierce County a check for that." It's never been cashed, but we sent Pierce County a check for that, and they had the date that it was issued, uh, and so we had to fill out paperwork, and we went back through the system, and we verified with a, with a range that no, no check for that amount's ever been sent through our system. So, you know, we filled out that paperwork, and that was one of the older ones right on that point that we started going back to, so we won't lose on, lose out on that. Uh, so, we expect more and more. There were five more claims today that we're following up on from improper zip codes, uh, to improper coding that, that's gonna total $2,800 or so, uh, that, that's due to us last week, and that's just one weekend. You know, whenever you look at the holiday, that we got that stuff filed last Monday and Tuesday, and we're already getting these letters coming to us to get these things corrected, and, and that's what we were focusing on, those older claims, so that, you know, every day that passes, we, you know, we're not losing out on those.
How much of that $818,000 do you think we will not be able to recover?
Mr. Paul, at this point in time, I would, I would hate to even project that. I, I really don't know until I could get, and, until I talk back with, uh, with the gentleman at the, at the Credit Bureau that handles those collections and where those were turned over to, I really would hate to even try to project that.
That started in 2005. That's how far you went back?
Uh, actually, there were a few on there from 2003, uh, but the majority of them are 12 to 36 months old on there. Uh, so, you know, we're kinda crossing our fingers that we're gonna be able to, to go back at least 18 months on those, and like I said, the majority of those are 12 to 36 months.
If I don't hear more questions on protocol, did you have any protocol that was in place before you started?
No, sir, not anything written as far as medical protocols. Through employee interviews and, and, uh, speaking with the employees, they were always instructed to go by the current state protocols. Well, current state protocols change every few months. Unless they're printed, unless they're updated, unless you're trained on those protocols, you know, that, that's what we were told with, uh, you know, the staff said, you know, we're, we're, we're just go on current state protocols. Uh, so, uh, we, we, we will be updating, updating them, uh, every six months at a minimum. Anything else? Oh, and one other thing today, I believe it was, uh, 90, was it right at $9,200 that was brought over today, uh, that, that went into general fund, uh, for collections that just come in, uh, just this, just this morning.
Okay, item number eight, discussion on purchasing a 12 M2 Caterpillar motor grader from Yancey Brothers Incorporated for the sale price of $222,450 with a trade-in allowance of $139,000 for the net total of $83,450. This will be purchased on a federal contract funding from 2008 Splotch Funds.
Mr. Chairman, I'm not gonna ask if we really need this six motor grader. Pierce County's got 308, 380 miles of dirt roads. We've got six motor graders. Bacon County's got 490 miles of dirt roads. They're maintaining their road with four graders and one spare for, in case one of theirs breaks down or construction. Ware County's got 500 miles, is what their website said. I didn't speak with, heard what their website said, 500 miles of dirt roads, and they do six motor graders. I would just like to question, can we get by with four and keep one as a spare?
To answer your question, yes, sir, we could. Uh, AJ's here. He'd be glad to answer any questions about motor graders and staff, uh, if you need him to address any of that. He and I spoke briefly on that.
I would just, we'd just like to discuss with the board and see what their thoughts are. You know, we've paid for all of our graders up front. If we need it, we, you know, we certainly need it, but it's not, you know, and we cut back on everything else. Might be another area that we'll cut back on. AJ's doing a good job on maintaining the dirt roads from what we thought. I think maintaining with four graders and a spare.
Five in spare.
We have five, but you're running four crews?
No, I've got five people, six graders.
Well, what situation was, we had a, one of our graders that stayed in shop all the time, so we actually only were able to benefit by having five. And for the biggest majority of this last year, one of those, uh, stayed in shop a lot of times, and basically, we, we were just running with four, uh, and one backup.
Mr. AJ, oh, so, when everything's up and running, are we running four routes or five routes?
Okay, we up, we got, come on up here. Everybody wants to see you.
What we have raised, we had six graders, and we only had five full-time employees. We had a part-time employee we got rid of on account of, he had been helping us, but he started off part-time with us, just working three days a week. And we were having so much downtime that we decided to go ahead and get rid of that part-time person and try to keep five running, and that's what it's got down to. We'd really have been running five instead of six, is what's been going on. Uh, and I don't know how to put the word, but it just seemed like, uh, seemed like the grader's down pretty well, been this year, down all, down with just five people.
So, I mean, so Dean and that, if everything's working like it's supposed to, we're running five graders every day now, is that what we're doing?
Right.
And then one spare, is that?
Right.
And it takes, how, with, with running the five, we're working, what, a four-day week, is that correct?
Yeah.
Does it still take about two weeks to get around?
Only, I can tell you this, on, with five graders running, they covering approximately 77 miles per month. Okay? That's...
Not per month?
No, 77 miles of one grader.
Oh, okay.
77 miles per month.
Okay.
Okay, but you got to include ditching and whatever comes up too in that once time on one grader. But if you divide that into, you'll come to 77, 77 miles.
About 15 miles a day would be a good average, maybe? That'd be 75 miles.
Well, when you got to break it right now is, look at weather, look at weather.
Yeah, 20.
Let's just be honest, look at weather. Uh, you, but if it's dry weather, we run more miles than that. It just according to, see, weather stops you. In this way, you can't push mud.
No, you can't.
Don't worry. But right now, I mean, we've run today, we've run, I ran some yesterday, uh, but we run when we can. But when it gets mugged, you can't push mud. You just try to be there and where everything's going, but luckily, right now, we got all the buses still running. Uh, had to close one road, but that's no problem, wasn't nobody living on it, hadn't hurt anything. But everything seemed to be holding good on what today. That's probably, we holding everything good.
My question would be, you're, you're the expert, you operate them every day. Bacon County's got 100 more miles than what we got, and I'm just using Bacon County comparable to, to us. They got 100 more miles of dirt roads. They run four graders to maintain and, and one spare. You know, if, if we need, I don't want to, I don't want to harm our dirt roads in any way. I think that you've got them in good shape, we'd wanna keep them that way. You've done a good job, and we appreciate that. But what I'm saying, if, if, if we can redo our routes, or if we can, if we can do anything to offset this one, and do we need to, if we need 10, let's get 10. But if we can get by with five, four and a spare, let's run four and a spare, is all I'm saying.
If everything clicks good, then we have decent weather. Weather's got a lot to do with what you're talking about. If you got good weather going, you can travel a bunch of miles. But then, go right back to this, you gotta ditch, and you can only ditch when it's not too wet. So you have to pick your times, but when you time as hard, you gotta go. So you'd have to make, you don't have to make the determination how quick you want your road graded. Approximately, sometimes it doesn't happen, approximately get over close every two weeks. And that's like, if it's bad like it's happening now, no.
That's right.
We might be lucky to get over with one time and a piece this month if you don't break. See, we've had it raining every day, maybe for 10 or 12 days, and, uh, I don't know, last Thursday, when I got off and worked, I was in between Bristol and Shawnee, it was coming about 10 inches over the road on 32. And, uh, I stayed up there till that, before it went off, and that was five and a half inches they got there. There, that's where this road that I told you we closed today.
But, uh, one thing slowed AJ up a little bit. He has been paying special attention to the bus routes, and the school has come up on a couple of occasions and thanked him for keeping the roads in good shape where the buses do run, uh, but we obviously have a lot of other roads that buses do not travel on.
Who's your, who's the drivers, uh, your graders every day, or who you have on every day?
I have, uh, David Tyson, GW, uh, Sam, David Carroll, uh, you think, you got four there, right? Sam, Billy Johnson. We got rid of the part-time guy one year about maybe six months.
And them men's on graders every day?
Yeah.
That's their job, they go on graders every day?
Yeah. That's their job. They have to run. I don't know how to say the word, but, uh, you pick your system, if it don't go good, and you can't get over, then you, you're looking to there, you, you know, where do you go? But we got five people going, and they got to go.
Oh, yeah.
I'm telling you, they got to go, if you keep them up good.
And so, my, my understanding, with good days, with, with the weather's good, with them five graders rolling every day, it takes about two weeks.
Two weeks.
That, that's what concerned me about it, Carl. I still like to see us get around every two weeks, but then you gotta have that spare to do that, too.
That's right.
You know, when that one goes down, that's my only...
That's if the weather's good. If the weather's bad like...
Yeah, but my question is, how is the other counties with 100 more miles of dirt roads doing it with four?
I could probably answer that question, my only head.
I'll, I'll do.
They're probably not doing as good a job as AJ's doing.
I just say this, I say this, they might be digging it rough every two weeks. And you can just ride and look at some of them, and then you probably get your opinion there, I would say. I don't think you can keep roads up and let them travel.
Yeah, I don't wanna, I don't wanna...
Carl, one of those machines they got in, in Bacon County is, you pull behind the truck.
I won't tell Roger, you said that.
Didn't they buy one, AJ?
I couldn't answer that question for you. Y'all got next to be trying to figure it out.
They either bought one or they made one. That's the bit.
I'm gonna tell Roger to YouTube this. Now, you're doing a good job with dirt roads, and we certainly don't wanna mess up what you're doing. My question was, if we need it, if we need 10, let's get 10, but just if you, if we don't, we have to have it.
If you're just throwing out suggestions and all, if you want a decent job done, majority of the time with everything going our way, I think you got to have five. Now, we've been doing it with six, so we're moving down that. We still handling it. I can.
If it's, if, if you do it with five, we got one for spare.
You don't have a spare then.
You won't have a spare if you do it with five.
Something broke down, you got a hotspot you gotta go to tomorrow, you know, to take care of that school bus, that, that's the only thing that bothers me.
Yeah, what I'm saying, we, if you, to take care of the school buses, each day, like, if they run in the morning, just say like tonight. In the morning, I was probably talking to Jackson in the morning, probably 6:30, he knows what time I'm away. And if he got some bad places, them thing, on that first route, when they come back around at 3:30, 4 o'clock at evening, most of the time, I got every one of them fixed, ready for. So just try to keep them bypassing around. But what I'm saying, you got to go with your wisdom.
You know, based upon the, the information Mr. AJ was saying, you know, I'd kinda like to see us stay with the, with the same setup we got now.
Well, we've got...
I understand exactly where you're coming from.
We've got a Caterpillar that's, that's up for renewal for a buyback. And the John Deere doesn't come up for like a year, year and a half? What's the time?
Year and a half.
Year and a half on the John Deere?
No, a little over a year. That's the one we had some problems with, but I look at it this way, being it's running better, let's get a year and a half out of them, where I see it. You know, that's, what I'm saying, their term would be up a little over a year, not a year and a half, a little over a year, I think. Might be two of them then, if I understand. Didn't we buy the 674s, two of them one time? I think that's right. That'd be probably next year when they come up.
Is that the one with the, with the three engines?
Yeah, we got it, but now, I'm gonna say this, that they, it's running better now. But let me just say this, the reason I like spare is when we getting it tight, you can ask my men, I'm not on the grid with them, we gonna get them roads. If you, you listen to your radio sometime, you hear, "Now, AJ, so you got to tighten up." That means I'm behind him pushing. But I'm just saying, I like that spare, 'cause I can jump out and we getting in the tight, and I can do the short things like, uh, tomorrow, I'm gonna do West Road. Okay, I don't hold anything back, I can do the things right at myself.
Yeah, I wouldn't question, I, the only, only thing that was brought my attention was, Ware County with 500 miles has got six graders, and Bacon County with 490 and, and five graders, you know? And that's, that's the only thing I wouldn't question. You certainly doing a good job on the dirt roads, built out of them.
Well, I, I, I'll just say this question, if you move down where we grade it once to them, once to, once and a half in a month, uh, they gonna...
I'm gonna call it, it might be the time they grade.
Oh, I'm getting that, too. I'm just saying, if you get down to that level where we can't grade but one, say, once to a month or one time in a half a month, uh, I think you gonna have some people come to look at me about every day or two then.
Mr. AJ, how do you do the half grade, just leave one side of the road?
No, no. What I'm saying is...
I know what you're saying.
A round and a half instead of two rounds.
What you saying, Mr. AJ? What you saying?
I think we're doing pretty good the way we are. According to this, a hundred and thirty-nine thousand dollars is a good price.
I, I really, I was thinking, it's on the purchase of a federal contract, you know, it hasn't been bid out. Me personally, I'm not for it, not tonight. But whatever, majority of the board wants to do, I'm. That brings, brings us to another topic on, on our next work session. I, I would like to talk about how we, how we get prices and bid things out. You know, we, uh, and I won't tie up a lot of time on this topic tonight, but, you know, we just make phone calls and get prices and quotes, and, uh, it's, it's really not fair to, to anyone that's bidding, uh, you know, these things, when they're not specs laid in front of them, uh, it, it's not apples to apples, and I deal with that every day. You know, it's, it's a hard way to do business, it's not a fair way to do business, and I would like to see us structure something when we go to, to purchase it, how we gonna bid it out, how we gonna handle it, to be fair to, to the taxpayers, to be fair to anyone that's bidding on it, we know that we get our best price, and, and, and everybody's treated equally.
I'd like to, Amy's here, she's our purchasing agent, and Amy, if you'll come up here, A.J., you swap seats.
I got a question for him. When the road's too wet, the plan, what does the operator do? You talking about what you get behind, I understand, the rain, you can't breathe.
They head to the Beaver Dams, because they got a lot of water, they got the Beaver Dam stop. I make them go to every, if we have time, I make them go with shovels, every one of them got shovels, I make them dig out the pipe, whatever, on their own route, and travel their own route.
Amy, if you'll come up and talk about our procedure on bidding things out, and I don't know if that's what you're talking about, Carl, but here's what we do as the admin staff.
Well, Ms. Carper, we, we do recognize that there are some issues. Lynn and I have done our research, and we have looked, and there are no clear policies in place for Pierce County in their purchasing. And Lynn and I are working together, trying to create a new policy. Hopefully, we will be able to have something to review at the next work session. I can say that there was a policy in place from nineteen twelve, long time ago, um, that had set some limits.
Back when they did pull the motor grader.
Um, and then last year, when, when the board made some changes in spending authorities, that contradicts everything that was in place before. So we are trying to, to come up with a better plan to make sure that we are doing things properly. And yes, getting quotes is getting quotes, but there's a difference between getting a quote and getting a bid. There's a difference between getting a bid and getting a proposal. So there's just a lot of terminology issues that, that we're going to have to work through, and it's going to be a lot of changes for everybody in the county in, in the way that we're going to have to do things.
We, we certainly need it.
But we are working towards getting something ready for you guys to look at in the next month or so. It's just, it's, it's a lot of information, because we can't just, we don't want to do just one little piece of our finance policy, um, because purchasing it and the only thing that, that goes on there, we want to do the whole thing at one time.
I think you've got a couple of things that are, are conflicting.
Right.
From one, from years and years ago, they said one thing, and then several years later, they said another, and so you've got conflicting policies that are out there now that need to be changed regardless of, of what else you do.
And I, and I am getting more, more training throughout the year on, on what the state says, how we need to do things, so, um, I am trying to make sure that we are doing things what the state says.
Thank you.
Boy, I'm glad you're at y'all's thinking about getting bids on paving, uh, here and what.
We approved to get bids on paving.
If bids would be appropriate, they do say.
That's what we decided, right, that's what we decided to do is to get bids on.
On, on person or whatever.
Right, I think so too.
Any more discussion?
Is there a time limit on when y'all have, uh, trade-in?
Yeah, actually, the time is already passed.
Oh, buyback.
That's a buyback. See Pierce County on a five-year buyback.
What is our buyback on this machine?
We've got the, uh, come on up here, we got the, uh, sales rep from Caterpillar here, he can explain.
Yeah, good evening, this is David, I'm the Yance Brothers, and I appreciate the opportunity to be up here in front of the guys. Um, the actual buyback was due up late June, early July, a hundred and sixteen thousand dollars. Right now, we've been able to go out and get more money for this machine, and the more money we give goes to the county. So at this time, right now, I mean, we're getting another plus twenty-three thousand dollars, actual trade-in dollars for the county. We put together a real good deal, uh, fair, honest, uh, numbers, what you're going to get every time, even if it wasn't bid price.
How do we know if it's fair and honest? But we know it's honest, but how do we know if it's fair if we don't know the bid anywhere?
Yeah, that's, that's, it's the same price that you can get if there wasn't a bid, so we don't hold anything back for municipality or county government. Trying to get counties as best as we can. Now, I know one thing, we did go back, and there is a sloper on this machine that comes back to camp, we did offer, give you the sloper back, and that's a forty thousand dollar add-on right there to get back to the camp to install it, so.
One thing, Carl, the, uh, ACCG, of course, Caterpillar, as you know, is exclusive ACCG, but I think A.J. has done some price comparison, uh, with, between John Deere and Caterpillar, they, they're just neck and neck, there's not nickel's worth of difference in the price, but I think there probably is in the, in this piece of equipment.
Well, I mean, I think you've got some prices too, and, and that's, that's one reason I can, uh, I, I can both guess on this tonight, because I have seen some pricing. So, I, like I say, it just goes back to what, you know, bid now, or you don't bid it and price it properly, you know, this man's got this man's number, and, and it's just, it's just not.
I don't disagree that, that you could, there's a couple different ways you could do this. So whatever the commission wants to do, A.J. and I are more than willing to do whatever y'all want. Why don't we just table this through right now? How long do you want to table? Till our next meeting, the workshop. That's up to y'all. You have to make a motion.
I think you're going to table it too, you need to go ahead and decide as far as if we're going to get some more bids, what machines we're willing to accept bids on. Because I'm like, Carl, you got to compare an apple to an apple.
You can't, you can't get another bid from, you can't get another bid from Caterpillar, don't you know?
Well, my, my number's out.
You got to show his bid.
Oh, yeah.
Did you look at the, fair, I mean, that's.
Exactly right, I go through this every day, my.
Can't bid. So then, either we go or we don't. Well, I think the reason why it was handled this way is because it is a buyback. It is, uh, it's a little bit different than just buying one outright.
No, we're not going with buyback, we're going with trade-in.
Well, whichever way you go, you know, you can, you can do it any way you want to.
Oh, yeah, unless you chose to buy back then.
Well, see, a federal contract is as low as you can buy.
True. Actually, we're, we're actually a lot less than the federal contract. That federal contract allows us to go, we go out and bid on certain models. The motor grader is on the federal contract, there's a set amount, discount, we go above beyond that discount, for county government, but we know we can get it. That just allows, that, that contract's just out there, lets you know that you can buy all of it, but we always beat that contract.
Question, is machinery going up?
Yes.
Like every one of them? Okay, what's your pleasure, girl?
Ms. Chairman, I make a motion for a buy machine.
Have a second.
I'll say it.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Thank you very much.
Item number nine is the invoices for the mode purpose facility center are the, in the NFC Library Project invoices as of eight-thirty-twenty-twelve, total a hundred and sixty-seven thousand seven oh one six eighteen. The NFC and the, the gymnasium is twenty-two thousand seven oh one fifty-one, and the library is a hundred and thirty-four thousand oh nineteen twenty-six, and the library park county is five thousand five oh two sixty-seven. That's a total of a hundred and sixty-seven thousand seven oh one eighteen. Do I hear a motion that we approve this? I make a motion. Have a second.
Second, Ms. Chairman.
All in favor of us signing the buy, an aye?
Aye.
And ayes have. Hopefully, hopefully, there's not but one or two more big tickets on the library. Is anything else to, we need to discuss? Y'all got anything else?
Uh, Mashawn, you asked me about Mashawn voting precinct, they, uh, they got the well there, they got it going, uh, they, it's, it's old root berry pump, he said, and if we must put a submersible pump, uh, again, it'd be about seven hundred or seven ninety, I believe, is what Lonny said, uh, but, uh, that will be the only thing that's holding them up from, they got heaters for the winter time, so the water was the main thing, Johnny said. So, Lonny did, did it going today, and you can see how long the root berry lasts, so maybe, maybe we may have an issue results, waiting your back from Lonny. It's, no, it's old clay, cauter pipe, tearer pipe, whatever it's called, old.
Tear cut.
Tear cut or pipe. Not sure how deep it is, Lonny said.
Better look in there to see where.
Yeah, he said he could, maybe get a submersible pump in there.
I'd like to bring up something, I kind of hesitate in a way, but, uh, I've still been receiving calls and people coming up to me about the reevaluation. Uh, I would like to see us maybe next year, I know we can't do anything about the reevaluation at this time, but there's no laws that say we cannot have a reevaluation or reassessment next year, is that correct?
That's correct, you can reassess next year.
I'd like to see us, uh, go ahead and have another reevaluation and do it in-house rather than contract it out.
Isn't that right, Bill, can you have another reassessment? Yep. You have whatever you.
I think we need to look at it closely, and I think, uh, from what I've heard, the different percentages, I think that they could be changed to where it wouldn't get us in trouble. I'd like to make, if it needs to, I'd like to make a motion that we have a, have them reassessed next year.
Do you want to try to reassess all three classes, or just one each year?
I think.
Bill needs to help us there, because I mean, he, he can't, I know that Phil's office can't, can't do eleven thousand pounds next year.
Yes, we're short two, two employees that, that they laid off in the last year.
I think what they're talking about, Bill, is you could hire two people, probably cheaper than what you paid those people to come down here and assess that property.
I think that was a dud, them three that was hired for the price that they paid. This one came up with eighty-three acres, most of it's salt land, and hadn't evaluated that highway frontage, no highway frontage whatsoever. I think some of them people didn't get out of the car. I don't know how they done it, I ain't seen no sign, ain't let me know, no, I don't know if anybody's been there or not, and I just pulled it up on the computer, I don't know. But I did know I have no eighty-three acres, highway frontage. As long as highway frontage, where the line comes in this way, and the line goes that way, that right there is next to the highway, notice that, from right there to the beginning of the land, from there. Now, that ain't right. You need some local people to, to get out and know what to do.
You got anything?
You know, if we're going to do that, I mean, that's fine, but, you know, we need to go ahead and get an opposition, hire probably two more people, and, I mean, you know, that's all part of it, he can't do.
Well, Bill and I had a discussion on it, uh, Bill Selly, uh, Bill Roger and I have talked about it several times, and I think there was, there was such discrepancies brought up by everybody that, that I've talked to, and I know, like, y'all have talked to. Uh, I just think that would be the only fair way to do it, since we can't do anything about this year, uh, is just get in there and hire our own people, people that know the land here in Pierce County, and people that know if a parcel is underwater, it's got to be less, valued less than one that's sitting on high ground, I mean, we've heard case after case like that, so, um, yeah, I, I think we should hire two people and, and do it ourselves.
How much you gonna, how much you gonna cost us to hire certified rations?
Arrested, fault land.
Just tell me a number out there.
Thirty thousand, please.
So you got thirty times two plus the benefits, so you need to, it'll take about eighty or ninety to hire two people.
How much do we pay for those others? There's a hundred and over a hundred and tons of alcohol, huh?
Mm-hmm. Hundred and ninety.
What if they're part-time, you don't have, uh?
You won't ever, you can't ever build a part-time person, will you? You just can't do the parcels.
Temporary?
You just, you, you just can't, you, you can't do the eleven thousand parcels if we don't have more people. That, that's, and if I'm wrong, Jim, Bill.
It's going to take somebody full-time, and they going to have to get in and do the job and do it right. And it's going to take, you know, all of us helping that department to get the job done right, I don't care what it takes, uh, we don't want the same thing to happen again. And they, uh, you know, that's all I think about.
And I, I agree, I don't have a problem with Bill, but just what, I'm just caution you, just go ahead and add ninety thousand dollars to the budget for him too.
Well, I think for the, for the peace of mind, for the taxpayers, I think that's what we should do.
That's good, I don't have a problem with it.
I know I got to find the ninety thousand dollars, and we'll just work real hard to find it, because I think it's money well spent.
Can you do it, uh, on an independent contractor type basis with them, so you wouldn't have to, uh, have the exposure of a, uh, of having benefits, and then, or hire them with the understanding that they are only going to be there as long as it takes to get the job done, which y'all estimate to be a year?
That's possible, but you're not going to find two people that live in Pierce County to do this job.
Well, here's, here's the problem you're going to run into.
You can't find a certified.
One year you're going to do residential, the next year you need to do commercial, the next year you need to do agriculture. the next year you need to do agriculture. So, you know, every three years.
Three years.
Every three years, you need to.
That's right.
Somebody needs to be by your, your place of business or your residence or your, your, your farm evaluating your land.
You need to go and decide what order you're gonna do it in.
Yeah. So, yeah, I don't know how you wanna do it, whether you wanna make a motion to, to do that now, or you wanna put it in a work session, or whatever you want to.
I think it would be proper to have it in a work session. That would probably be the best thing to do.
One of y'all needs to make a motion.
That we have it in the work session. I'll make a motion. Have a second. All in favor, if I sign the buy, an aye? Anybody else have anything?
One more thing, uh, Carl, you have some, you have some information on, on the John Deere, uh, pricing. I didn't break it with you. I, I, I realize that, and, and I don't think that, uh, what you exposed before hits over. I just, I just wanna go, the, the numbers is gonna come out at the workshop.
Right.
'Cause I know that our competitor's gonna be here and, and he's gonna be angry that he didn't get an apple to bash shot, uh, he wasn't asked for it. So you've got some numbers, and, and them numbers reflect, uh, substantial savings compared to what we bought tonight.
I don't think so.
I know so.
We, we, we'll bring them out in the workshop.
But I just wanna, I'll go, Rick, you've got the numbers. In other words, between now and next work session, there's no numbers gonna go be, be gone.
No, they're already, A.J.'s got them, I think.
So you'll be able to see, uh, the difference in the prices at the work session.
Yeah, because the sloper, with the sloper on, with the John Deere, is eighteen, I know, but he was gonna charge us eighteen thousand dollars to put it on.
It, well, and, and you go back to the other man, we, we're not, we don't need to hash this out, it's done been voted on. What I wanna make a point is, those numbers is gonna be gotten between now and the next work session.
No, no.
The numbers is on your desk.
That's right.
And, and you'll be, uh, 'cause he's gonna ask to go over that in that.
That's exactly right. Not a problem.
That's announced, this meeting is adjourned.